Okay, it's seven o'clock, regular meeting on Buckhannon City Council. The quarter, he asked you to join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. With respect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seen guests, none signed on the register to speak. No Westland students. Michael?
Just have one item under the agenda, and if you'll notice, it's actually a revision to Resolution 21311, which is the resolution that council approved at the last council meeting in reference to the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the ADA compliant playground equipment, safety surfacing. There's something for council to consider tonight. Council approved appropriating out of an $82,000 project, half of that, which is $41,000, in their Resolution 21311 to the last meeting. We were actually approached after that meeting, a few days after the meeting, by an individual who was wanting us to consider a kind of expanding our ADA scope of our project to include some paved parking areas at the playground. As you know, the playground on North Buckhannon Park and the park itself have gravel parking lots, and it's hard for folks, especially in wheelchairs, to navigate around in gravel. So paving those spots for handicap spots would be beneficial not only to children, but also to adults. So it'd be kind of an inclusive part of this project. So talking with Jay Holland, Jay did some numbers and actually came up with the cost to lay some asphalt in six spaces at the park and also do some concrete risers to help with some navigation in the bathroom facilities and also the fountain facilities as well. And of course, by adding that to thus and encompassing a larger scope of making the playground a lot more ADA compliant and friendly for all folks, not just children, as far as parking is concerned and access to some of our existing facilities, there is a cost increase that goes along with that. It's not really as simple as just laying good old fashioned hot mixed asphalt down. Now, since it is in a flood plain, there has to be what is called a permeable hot mixed asphalt, which actually will absorb the water and let the water flow out. And again, since it's in a flood plain, we can't add something that would actually, you know, hold water. That's not allowed by FEMA. So it takes a special type of asphalt, which obviously, a special type of asphalt is going to increase cost as well. So that's basically why we're here tonight. There's also some drainage pipe for one of the pieces of playground equipment that's also included in here as well to assist with some of the flow of drainage on the particular piece of playground equipment. To really make a long story short, if council desires, that project would go from $82,000 to just south of $135,000. Just again, understanding this hot mixed asphalt, this permeable asphalt, there's a pretty good cost with that.
Let me ask you something real quick. How many parking spaces are up there?
Well, it's a gravel parking lot, so it really would just depend on how many cars that you can get in there.
Are we, aren't we required by law to have so many handicapped as a formula, depending on how many other parking spaces we have?
It's a formula. I know with some of our buildings, when you're building a town, you have to have a certain amount of parking space. You have to have a certain amount of designated spaces for handicapped. At the present time, we don't really have a handicapped area because it's all gravel.
Right.
So it's not compliant. I mean, so obviously, this would do that. Six would be certainly sufficient. Dave, I really, I don't know, probably somewhere between 50 and 100.
Well, my question is that, and we talked about this yesterday a little bit, and I didn't really think of this at the time, but if you have 30 or 40 or 50 or 60 parking spaces there, FEMA's telling us that we just make six of them with a permeable asphalt. I don't understand why we could just not use regular asphalt for six and the rest of the parking lot's going to be gravel. I don't understand how that's gonna, even though it's in the flood area, how that would interfere with the runoff.
If you're looking at the regulations, not the logic.
Can we ask for an exception, I mean, an exemption or something for just six out of 50?
You're dealing with two different entities. You're dealing with ADA and issues with ADA, and you're also dealing with FEMA at that point. And if one of those, gosh, I doubt either one of those would really budge on something like that. You know, they're basically telling us, from the ADA side, you have to have paved parking spaces for folks to get in and out with wheelchairs.
So we haven't been in compliance for years. True.
Yeah, essentially.
I mean, the problem is...
There is pavement over there that you can park on and enter the park.
Yeah, enter the park, but not actually in the parking lot.
Not in the parking lot.
I think it's important that we recognize Americans for Disabilities Act, but if you did a survey of our whole city, we'd be out of compliance everywhere you go, quite frankly. And I just think it's unfortunate that you take six spaces out of 40 or 50 or 60 and that we're required to put in a compliant for only a very small percentage, where the asphalt would be sufficient and it wouldn't really interfere with the flood issues. I mean, it's just one more example of the cost curve that keeps going up for not just us, but the federal government, the county government, state government, city municipalities because of these regulations that just are not common sense a lot of times.
I mean, you have to have paved surfaces for folks to be able to get out.
I understand that.
And then those surfaces, in a flood plain area, FEMA says, no, you can't have good old fashioned regular asphalt. We know that you have to have this permeable.
If anybody asks the question, if you put only one tenth of your gravel with regular asphalt, are you going to interfere with the flood situation? I think it's a question that's worth asking anyway. I mean, that's my position. Because you're saying we're going to spend 50 some thousand more dollars because we have to put in a...
For asphalt and some drainage tunnels and some concrete kind of risers, if you will.
But the escalating cost is because of the concrete asphalt.
Pretty significant cost. Pretty significant increase, yes.
That's unfortunate.
Dave, I would take some issue with your statement that we're out of compliance across the city. I don't believe we are out of compliance across the city. Requirements are one space per 55.
I'm not talking about just the parking. There's other issues that we have every city in the country, as every county in the country does. And depending on how strong your advocacy base is for people with disabilities, they can find a lot of things that need to be corrected.
We are doing pretty...
I understand that.
Addressing that.
I understand that.
But I understood your question, Dave, with regard to parking.
No, no.
I do believe the number is one space per 55. So the six is actually significantly greater than what would be required by ADA, but perhaps not for parking.
I think years ago, it used to be one for seven.
No.
This is not for cities, but for colleges and universities. It was, you know, my memory may be failing, but it was more than what you thought would be practical. But if we've got to do what we've got to do, do it.
Well, it's a decision, and I want to lay those numbers out. Again, it went from 82 to roughly just south of 135. So that's about a $53,000 increase. Again, this is a 50-50 grant. So the city's obligation would increase by $26,500. So the current resolution was $41,000. So obviously, adding 26,500 would make that $67,500. So the resolution revision in front of you, if you so desire, and if not, we can go to the current one that was approved at the last council meeting. The current resolution revision in front of you would be $67,500. But again, would provide us with a pretty unique opportunity to address some overall compliance issues, if you will, and certainly make that inclusive for not just children, but anyone who wants to park in the park and enjoy the park. So it would be a pretty good improvement.
I mean, where are we from a financial, is this going to really impact?
Well, Tom, I mean, the good thing about it is, Jay and I were talking, you have to exhaust the grant within two years. So it goes to review in Philadelphia. Grants have to be submitted by the end of this month. Bureaucracy, it takes a while. They start reviewing them in March. Last year, they didn't get it turned around and get a definitive award letter out till September because of what was going on in Washington. So this could be every bit as close as that. It'll probably take us into next fiscal year, July 1, and then we have two years. So if we wanted to, we could phase it in and do it that way and break that up significantly. The thought process with Jay and I talking was, you know, if we're going to do this and get this compliance and make these parking spaces and deal with some of the drainage, with some of the equipment and the concrete risers on some of our facilities, if we have an opportunity to get at least half of that paid for instead of paying $53,000, you know, paying that 26,500, then let's go ahead and give it the old try and see if we're successful.
Right, this is only committing the money if the grant is awarded.
Correct, correct.
So you won't do, we're not going to do any work until we find out whether we get the grant? Is that what you're saying?
Right, because, I mean...
So you're looking at two to three years?
Yeah, we can span that out. I mean, once we get notification to proceed. And I know there was a question at the last council meeting about, you know, going ahead and doing some of that stuff in advance, which is certainly admirable, but in reading the grant, any expenditures prior to award notification will not be subject to reimbursement.
Yeah, that's a pretty standard.
So if we do not get the grant, I think it's something that we should realize and we should still try to do, you know, under our capacity, even if we have to, you know, instead of two phases, maybe we do three or four phases. But certainly, certainly something that would be necessary to at least take one of our parks and upgrade it, you know, in many ways and have that inclusive for the folks and the children in our community.
Well, I tend to agree that, I mean, that's a step that we should probably take in order to be more inclusive and make sure that there are opportunities for children and families to have, you know, recreation parks.
And this is one of the easier targets because of North Buckhannon, because it's relatively flat. City Park proposes a lot more challenges, but certainly can be done.
That we've done, that we...
I just want to say that I really am upset that we can't go ahead and do this part for the handicapped kids at the same time we're doing the park down at Park Street. I mean, I've seen a lot of children sitting around that can't get out and play on that equipment and everything, and they just sit and watch. And they're wanting to play, but they don't have the facilities to do that. And I'm, you know, I'm sorry that we can't get it done at the same time we're doing the other one. And if any way possible, I think we should do that, but I'm really upset that we can't do that for the kids out there.
It would be nice, because we're going to make that installation of the stuff that we receive for City Park and whatever we would do, or if we contracted it out, then have them come over and do that at that park, you know, and it would be a really nice upgrade.
I know, but we went ahead and we got equipment for the City Park because the old wasn't safe. And so we went ahead and we got a sizable amount of equipment for that park just because a handful of people said, we need some playground equipment down here. And when there's just as many people that say we need something for the handicapped kids, for the ADA kids, as we do for the others. So it's, I'm just, you know, sitting here thinking my thoughts about how we're treating them, I think, a bit unfairly.
If we, if we're declined on this grant application, when would we know? Within the same, would we know at about the same time or if our application were accepted?
Probably the fall.
Yeah, that'd be a good, or late summer.
You're looking at nine to 10 months.
Too late to go ahead?
It's not getting reviewed in Philadelphia till March.
Yeah, I want to remind the council also that we really got the stimulus for doing the Park Street area was when somebody fell and broke their arm on one of the pieces of equipment over there at the facilities.
Yeah, it was faulty equipment.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I think we have to be careful how we expend our resources, obviously, but again, as I said several times, this is an environment where if you want to do things, you can go out and borrow money at very, very, you know, historical rates of interest that we'll probably never see again within X amount of years. But there's a lot of things that we probably should be doing, and we need to prioritize what is important for the city and for the citizens. And this is certainly one of those things, obviously.
Well, there's another grant opportunity with the Development Office, smaller amount. It's like a 10% match that was appropriated or requested by a couple of our state senators, and Barnes and Tucker. And we're looking at being able to use that for a variety of things, from additional playground equipment at Stockard, but, I mean, just a variety, potential skate parks, potential other equipment. And I think if we're able to secure this grant with what we were able to secure with playground equipment for City Park and then max that in with what we might be able to receive from the Development Office, if you look at where we may be this time next year, is a complete 180 improvement, you know, from where we are at this point right now, you know, as far as playground structures are concerned. I'm not really quite sure why all the grants are out for all of playgrounds, but, you know, we're certainly going to seize that opportunity and try to apply for as many as we can within our financial means. But again, this is an increase, but we're running up against ADA, we're running up against FEMA, you know, and all the regulations and all the things that come with all of that. You know, it's nothing of our device.
Are there any ADA grants out there?
Probably, nothing that's came across our desk, you know, recently. Kind of a winding down grant period for most, and it should be kicking up, should be kicking up next calendar year, of course.
Although a lot of your grants that support a lot of non-for-profit organizations have been cut back, you know, fairly 5, 10, 15%.
This, a few years ago, was just, was a couple million dollars, and now it's down to, I think, maybe half a million.
What about corporate grants and, you know, like Coca-Cola or any places like that? Is there anything there?
I would think so. Walmarts, places like that, you know, sometimes give community...
Why don't we look for it?
We can.
This particular grant has been a cumbersome proposal, very detailed. Jay and Michael have spent a lot of time on it. Because we told them to go ahead, they've spent a lot of time on this. And it's, if we're going to do this, we need to prove it tonight because this has to be mailed out next week.
Well, I'll second it. I just think that we should go ahead and continue to look for some money out there from somebody else that we could utilize, that maybe that we get something paid for for the handicapped.
Well, this is one source of funds that we are...
Yeah, but maybe we can get something this year instead of two years down the road, Mayor.
We're a couple of signatures away from finalizing this proposal, and it depends on whether you approve. Tom knows that we approved Resolution 21311 revised, we have a second. And is there any further discussion on the resolution?
Nothing changes in the resolution except for the amount. Which represents an increase of $26,000.
So all in favor of the motion, signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. And certainly, we will continue to seek any assistance that we can find, not only for playgrounds, but for anything else that would improve the lives of people in the city.
Just another reason why we should have a grant writer.
And that's all I have underneath for tonight.
Any other questions for Michael?
Thank you, Michael. Police Chief Matt?
A few items to report tonight. As I've mentioned in the past, just as of Friday, we graduated one of our officers from the police academy. It was a very good day for him and his family. He is now on duty, started this Tuesday, and is working the evening shift with a couple of our field training officers. It's running him through that program over the next few months. Josh Wilson was the officer that just graduated. Marshall O'Connor will begin his training on January 6th. So that has definitely been confirmed, and he's looking forward to that, as are we. Exciting piece of equipment to announce to council tonight that we recently acquired at the police department. Just last week, we went to the academy to have a very professional installation done onto one of our cruisers of an LPR unit. LPR stands for license plate reader. Very technical, very high-tech piece of equipment. In fact, it's probably one of the most high-tech pieces of equipment we have in our arsenal in the police department right now. An LPR unit is capable of many things. A lot of people may be familiar with it in terms of its scanning license plates for stolen cars. And that's just, indeed it does that, but that's just unlimited amount of what it's capable of doing. It's a very versatile piece of equipment. Essentially, what it entails is three cameras mounted to the top of one of our cruisers. There is a forward-facing left camera, a rear-facing left camera, and a forward-facing right camera. And it feeds into a computer unit that is bolted down in the rear of the unit. And it scans real time as the vehicle drives around neighborhoods. As soon as it comes into contact with a license plate, it instantly, it scans it and instantaneously, it takes three pictures. It takes a color picture of the car, it takes a black and white picture of the car with a little red box drawing around the license plate for identification. Then it takes a zoomed-in picture of the license plate and displays all of these on the screen. It works off of a mounted computer unit inside the vehicle itself. So we're able to get this information instantaneously. As it scans these plates, it will instantly transfer that into its database. It will read it out on the screen, what the plate is. So just for instance, if it's 1AB123, it shows you the picture of that plate and then you get a printout of that on the screen. And when it does this, again, instantly, as it's taking these pictures, it scans it across the database. We have a wireless connection. This is, some of you that have been around a while know that this has kind of been a pet project of mine for a number of years, getting wireless capability inside of our vehicles. And we've endeavored to do that for, again, a number of years. We just, at one point, were ahead of the technology, nevermind I'd say that, but we were actually ahead of the technology. We tried air cards a few years ago, and the wireless coverage wasn't good enough to provide what we needed it for. So, as you know, technology is forever increasing exponentially. It's finally caught up. We just revisited the wireless connectivity to our laptop here in the last few months as we sought to begin this LPR project. We field tested the wireless connectivity first to make sure it would work, and it works like a charm. We're able to run a number of things in addition to the LPR units in the vehicle itself. We have a warrant database that we've worked with the state police to have set up so we can instantaneously run a person's name through the database and check whether or not they have a warrant anywhere in the state of West Virginia. We can show active warrants in any county in West Virginia on this database now. We can connect remotely to the accident report server. And we've had a few bugs with the offense report server that we use. We're working on fixing those. I understand that, just in the last couple of days, we have gotten those resolved, so we're still getting that up and running. Once that's done, we can do a number of things in the vehicle in addition to the LPR. So very exciting news on that front. Back to the LPR unit with the wireless connectivity, again, to the point where we need it. When a plate is scanned, it will run it across what's known as a hot list. We receive updates twice a day. Every 12 hours, we receive an update over the wireless connection that we have with the West Virginia Intelligence Exchange. They will update us on anything that a police agency is looking for a vehicle for, and therein lies the versatility of the LPR unit. Not just for stolen cars, certainly that's very much included, but any reason a police agency would be looking for a car and would enter its license plate number. Say, for instance, somebody, an agency has a warrant for somebody and they know that they're driving this car. They would enter that into the notes section of their submission to Libex. And the list goes on and on. Again, any reason a police agency would be looking for a vehicle, maybe it's just involved in a theft, hit and run, whatever, yeah, Amber Alert, certainly. Those are entered into the database, and the reason is given on the screen. If an alert is in fact made, that is, if a scan of a vehicle that's entered into the database as a wanted vehicle for whatever reason, an alert sounds on the console, and the reason for the stop or the reason the officer should stop the vehicle is listed right there on the screen. So we have that tool. So far, we've had, I just reviewed it this morning. Another part of the versatility is you can go back into its log and look at all the plates that it scanned, and it keeps all the pictures. And in addition to the pictures, there's a GPS unit attached to it. So not only you get a picture, but you get a pinpoint map showing you where the car was when it was scanned. And so we reviewed this this morning, and so far, the vehicles, it's scanned 1,300 vehicles in the last week. And so again, it just keeps us until, again, it needs to overwrite. There was a false hit of a stolen plate, but it was the wrong state. And that's the one thing it doesn't do, is to say, yeah, it'll read the numbers, but it doesn't distinguish the state. So some states will have similar formats on their license plate. So yeah, I mean, but as far as that goes, just a couple of false hits at this point. But he's been very active, the officer that I have it assigned to is Officer William Courtney. He's been very active about being mobile and out and about with his vehicle.
How much did the unit cost?
Well, that's a good question, because that's what I was getting at. Typically, the LPR unit, and this does not include the installation, just the unit itself is typically $20,000. We didn't have to pay anywhere near that. And the reason being is, you've heard me talk about our partnership with the Fusion Center. By virtue of being a member of the Fusion Center, they granted that piece of equipment to us. Our cost was installation of a computer mount. We already had the computer. Each of the officers were assigned a laptop computer, so we already had that. So the mount adds, is what, around $600, Mike? So the mount at around $600. Our wireless connectivity, and we're paying $50 a month for that. And, well, that's it. And so Mike and I worked together to make sure, before getting into this project, that it was going to be physically sound, and it was. And so yeah, that's our commitment. $50 a month for wireless, one-time $600 payment for the mount, and we got a $20,000 piece of equipment that's really given us quite an edge when it comes to patrol and investigations.
How long has it been deployed?
For a week.
For a week, one week. 15,000 a week.
Does it work at night too?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it works wonderfully at night. It's got an infrared scanner in it, so yeah, it can...
Every hit on that...
Now, the color picture won't show up very well at night, but the black and white shows it's kind of tremendous.
Statistically, how many stolen vehicles do we see in the city and the county on a three-year basis?
That varies by year to year. I mean, a normal year reported to us from the city, a normal year would be one or two. We had kind of an upsurge of that this summer. We had joyriding incidents. I think there were upwards of seven reports this summer. All the vehicles were returned. There were joyriding incidents, they would take them and drive them around through the night and usually bring them back in a damaged condition. and usually bring them back in a damaged condition the next morning. But that's just what's reported here in the city. This database is any vehicle that's reported stolen and entered into this database statewide. So, there's a lot of times that, just in my experience, we've come across vehicles that are reported stolen from other counties. We've gotten, sometimes we'll get a BOLO on that and we're able to catch that. But a lot of times, you know, who knows? We could, many times, there could be vehicles that are wanted for whatever reason out there. We can drive them right by them, not knowing that they're wanted for whatever particular reason from all corners of the state. But with this technology, they're able to instantly scan and give us that information.
So this is just statewide, it's not nationwide?
No, I believe the hub is comes from the state, but from my understanding, it is national.
Does computers give you a beep?
Yeah, it actually sounds like a little siren going off. A little red light flashes on it.
What's the timeline between when you take a picture and when you get the beep?
Instantaneous. Yeah, it's amazing how, I can't fathom to truly, I can kind of explain to you the way I was taught when we trained on it last week, but to truly wrap my head around how it works, it's amazing that technology exists. Of course, I'm fascinated by it. It's like a thing. But no, and going back to your question, Ron, it's national because the false hits that I was getting were showing stolen plates from other states. Yeah, and that's all I have.
Questions, any other questions or comments for Matt? Are the officers, the officers being trained? I mean, I can imagine you get false hits. You know, a false hit that if there's a warrant out for somebody from another state for a violent felony, and a false hit comes up. I mean, are there any safeguards in place to make sure that the officers aren't going to end up drawing down on an innocent person?
Yeah, before he, actually, everyone needs to stop. The officer that is operating the unit, it's only in one vehicle assigned to one officer right now. And he went, he and I went through the training together last week. And he was, we were both taught to verify once a hit occurs or an alert occurs, to verify that it is valid, then act accordingly.
So you can tell from the photograph what state the plate is from?
Yeah, yeah. 99% of the time, sometimes you'll get this wrong when there'll be a blur or there'll be a shadow on it. But, yeah, 99% of the time, especially the black and white image, the zoom, it's very good.
You said this information is updated every 12 hours?
Every 12 hours, the hot list is updated.
The hot list is updated.
Yeah. And we can enter into our own plates, into the hot list ourselves as members. Or we could do local searches. We could just enter into that computer in that unit and just look for here in town. And it won't go out throughout the state, all the LPR units. Whatever goes in the hot list goes out to all LPR units in the state. We just do a local search of states with this thing.
So how many of them are there in the state?
Numerous. They have a lot on the turnpike. Obviously, your major highways, your populated areas throughout the state. There wasn't any in this particular part of the state. That's why they wanted it here, to evenly space the units throughout the state.
What about the idea of getting one of the mounts in a fixed location?
There are, yeah, there are fixed-location mounts in different areas. I know on state borders.
It should be like a person of interest.
Yeah, the state border has mounted units.
The false hits that you said you received, is that from you going to verify?
No, the false hit was, the sequence of the plate was the same. Say, for instance, it scanned an Ohio plate and the false hit would say, well, this is stolen from Pennsylvania. Well, if we're looking at an Ohio plate, again, that's why we need to verify. This is saying it's a stolen plate from Pennsylvania. I'm looking at an Ohio plate, it's a false hit.
Well, if we had that years ago, my girls were dating, could've told where they were, couldn't we?
Absolutely, because you can go in. This is another thing I like about it, is if you're looking for a license plate, if you're investigating whatever, and I want to go in and say, somebody's telling me they weren't at a particular location at a particular time, I can enter the license plate into that. And if it was scanned by that vehicle, it'll show you the picture of the car, the time, and the map coordination.
I'm taking my plate off. You start writing your bicycle.
CNSA.
Thank you, Matt.
We got to play it out in the parking lot when you need to check it.
Thank you, Matt.
Sam Ludlow, City Engineer.
You don't have anything that can compare with what I've just heard.
Now, we might consider that, putting cameras up at the inlet. That's a good idea, Ron. We did have a sanitary board meeting this afternoon. Our agenda seems to stay the same month after month. Dominated, again, by the sewer failure. There has been quite a bit of activity, although activity has been limited and curtailed by the holiday, Thanksgiving, and by the weather. But we did appear again before the IJDC and we did receive a $100,000 grant to assist us. We certainly appreciate the support and assistance that we got from Region 7 Planning and Development Council in our efforts with the IJDC. We, I think I reported at the last meeting that we had laid about 500 feet of 8-inch pipe, which will be part of the force main from the proposed pump station. We were able to connect that to the discharge manhole during this last month and also connect our temporary pumping system into that line. One of our biggest concerns was that we had a 4-inch line laying on top of the ground. That was pretty vulnerable, both to weather conditions and to vandalism or damage, whether it was vandalism or otherwise. So, we've been able to discontinue use of that 4-inch line. We continue to operate the bypass pumping system. And two weekends ago, when we had three inches of rain, that was quite a challenge. We removed a number of trees between the football field, Wesleyan Football Field and the railroad tracks in preparation of extending the 8-inch force main. And we've ordered materials. The concrete for the wet well for the pump station is available for delivery whenever we're ready at this point. But it only just became available and I don't think we'll try to install that until after into the new year. So there has been quite a bit of activity. Other things that we have been doing, we continue to work on the Burton Phillips Sewer Extension at the Little Sand Run Road. We have quite an issue with our crossing across that road. We have to do a road bore. We have to have a pit that's 10 feet wide and 34 feet long. And it turned out that that's mostly in rock. We either have two conditions in Upsher County, solid rock or quicksand, it seems like. Or if you send us to do something, we'll encounter one of those two things. But we do have the bore pit complete and we have been in communication with the contractor who does the boring. And actually, they've contacted us a few times in late November and early December, inquiring about opportunities to fit into their schedule. So we're ready for them to come. We are also continuing to do some work at the plant, on the Plant Generators Pump Station. And we just kind of do it a little bit at a time as we have opportunity with these other activities. But it's nearing completion as well. Those were the basic things that we covered at the meeting.
Any questions for Sam?
Thank you, Sam. Water plant distribution, Tom, this evening. I can always tell by who stands up, right?
Someday we'll smash.
There you go.
At the latest water board meeting, we discussed a need to review and update our water tap policy. Of particular concern was a request for a water tap for garden use only. Wouldn't have any sanitary sewer purposes. We discussed possible loopholes that would not have benefited the department revenue concerns, impetus, what we were looking at. So we saw a need that we need to review that policy and put a little think tank together and try to come up with a scenario that might benefit the customer as well as us and make sure we're going to do the right thing for the customer. At the cinema, Kelly reports that the blacktop has been completed out there. Whether permitted them to do that, that pretty well completes the total project for the Water Department on the National Guard Armory Project. They reported last month that they fixed five water leaks. And of those five water leaks, there were zero water advisories or more water issues. Something we've been paying particular attention to as of recent. We exercised the plant generators in November and prepared them for winter storage. And so we were confident that when we need them, that they'll work. Hopefully, we won't need them anytime soon. We discussed, we had a visitor, Greg Belcher from Chapman Technical Group. We're in consultation with him, negotiating on looking at some Water Department, both water plant and distribution system needs. Some of our current needs that we have, some of them are 5-, 10-, 15-year visions. We've been able to feel from them where we need to go with our facilities in 10-, 15-, 20-year range. We've asked them to try to help us have that feel for what we need to do to protect the infrastructure we have and make sure it's there when we need them. And then I would close with, since the last two storms of last year, EPA has saw the need, particularly in, I believe, we're EPA Region 7, from the snowstorm and the windstorm we had. Water and wastewater systems had a miserable success rate during those events. There was a lot of failed systems, particularly in the state of West Virginia. Most of them were the smaller systems. But nonetheless, EPA felt a need to step up to the plate, try to bring an educational opportunity to managers and operators of those systems. And as a result of that, Kelly and I and Jay have participated in a couple of tabletop exercises. One was in August that dealt with a scenario very similar to the Dray Show. Generator needs particularly was discussed and highlighted over the lack of, for smaller systems, the need for more communication and cooperation amongst utilities. And in early December, we also participated in a tabletop exercise at the Armory in Weston. Folks involved were emergency managers from 10 different counties, water and wastewater systems, communications people, National Weather Service, West Virginia War. All of them sat down in a training scenario in the morning. And then in the afternoon, we went through a scripted scenario that would be very real or very, as close to real as one could predict for this area of the country. It was an eye-opener. There's definitely a need for communication, not only in our utility, about some things that we need to take a look at, but county-wide, there was some instruction as to need to probably have some sort of a water council that might need regularly, like quarterly, annually, semi-annually, to make sure that we can prepare and have facilities in place and a plan in place to deal with anything that we might feel would benefit our customers in time of need. So those were real good educational opportunities that definitely provided some resources, some website links to EPA for booklets and study guides and a roadmap, basically, to help us plan for events that we might not be able to predict. So with that, that's all I have, Matt.
Questions for Tom?
I don't have a question, but, Tom, if I recall, during both those storms, the city, you all really stepped up to the plate.
We were very fortunate. Our forefathers in planning and secured funds for our emergency generators and tools that we have got us through those two scenarios in a very good way. But there were some issues in the county and there were some major utilities in the state that weren't as prepared as they should be. Yes, Buckhannon did fare very well during those events.
Anything else? Thank you, Tom. Rich Clemens.
Two items this evening. One is the Planning Commission met on Tuesday evening to discuss the final report from a professor and a student from WVU that looked at three areas as part of our comprehensive plan, which is due early next year. And we also discussed briefly the rezoning issues, two of them. One is the new armory area, which is, automatically comes in as residential number one or R1 zone, single-family residence, which is obviously not appropriate for armory. So that needs to be rezoned. Two, and we're discussing, we haven't come up with a recommendation yet, but we're discussing how that would be rezoned. The second area is the college, West Virginia Wesleyan College has approached the city about rezoning the property in and around the college itself, which is currently zoned R2. And there are some things that happen at the college, which have been there for years, food service, restaurant capabilities and so on, which don't quite fit in an R2 zone. So there's an interest in coming up with a special zone for that area. Reason I emphasize these two areas is there was much concern the last time we had a rezoning issue, that people didn't know about this or didn't know it was coming. So this is your first opportunity to chime in if you're interested in one or both of those areas, to find out what's going on or have a comment that you wish to make regarding those zones, is let me know. We'd be happy to extend information. There will be public hearings in the process before any of this rezoning would take place or even recommended to take place. But that is actively in process now. So folks need to pay attention to that. The other item I have, which is of most importance, is that the city election for city recorder, my position, and two council members at large will be held on May 13th, 2014. Now, that is the same date as the primary election. Two years ago, in 2012, we made arrangements with the county to handle the actual election procedures. And we changed the date so that the city election date corresponds with the primary election date for state of West Virginia. And that will be May 13th, 2014. So there's three positions that will be available. All of them have four-year terms. There is an addition, additionally, there will be a question for the excess levy for the city library, the Charles W. Gibson Public Library. That will be up for a five-year renewal. There are five precincts that are located in the city. Precincts 8, 9, 12, 13, and 14. They all meet at their normal locations or it's anticipated that they'll They all meet at their normal locations, or it's anticipated that they will all be. Eight, 13, and 14 all vote at the Buchanan Academy Elementary School. Precinct nine is at the Courthouse Annex, and precinct 12 will be at the Fred Everly Technical Center. Those are all their normal locations for those precincts. All voters have to be registered and have to vote in their precinct that they've been assigned to. The early voting and absentee ballots and all of those other ways to cast ballot are on track with the state elections for the primaries. So all the dates that are involved, all the timeframes, the voting, if you vote early in person, will be at the courthouse, will not be at City Hall. Persons interested in filing for office, the earliest you can file for office is Monday, January 13 at City Hall. The only thing that occurs at City Hall is the actual applications for filing for candidacy. The last date, if you're going to file in person, is Friday, January 24, no later than 4:30 PM at City Hall. If you file by U.S. mail, it must be postmarked, not later than midnight Saturday, January 25. So the filing for office is going to occur between January 13 and at the latest, January 25. Once the individuals have filed for office, the last date to withdraw from the election is February 11. If you fail, if you apply and then choose to withdraw, you must withdraw by that date. If you don't, your name's automatically on the ballot and cannot be removed. The drawing is held at the courthouse on February 18 at 9:00 AM, which is set by state law. So if there's any questions, this will be obviously posted at City Hall. It will be in a legal advertisement as well. Hopefully, the newspapers and the media will carry these important facts as we get ready for election in 2014.
Can you explain what you mean by drawing?
You draw for the position on the ballot. The ballots, because the county's doing it, are actually electronic or mark sense ballots. If the city was still doing it, we do the old-fashioned paper ballots, which is really quite a chore. So having the county do it for us, besides saving money and having it fall on a date that is a holiday, which allows more individuals to go to the polls, and the drawing for position on the ballot is if, say, there's five people running for a particular office, they draw numbers out of the hat, one through five, and that's the order in which they're listed on the ballot. That's all it wants to do. Any other questions?
Just take care of business.
No. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. David McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor. Several updates and have another ordinance to tease you with, and then we'll take up ordinance 378 under your new business. We're working on the insurance auto auction matter. I have received the official plat from the attorney out in Chicago, and hopefully, in the next week, we will have the annexation petition out to them. There's some additional discussion that needs to take place. State code requires that the officers of the corporation be identified, that there be something evidencing who can sign the petition on behalf of a corporation, that kind of stuff. So it's a little more difficult than some of the other petitions we've done in the past, but we're getting there. The property swap involving Mark Carroll's company, we have received one of the plats and one of the descriptions of survey. Matt Heims is assisting me in deed preparation, but before we reach that point where we swap deeds, we have to go through an ordinance. And until I have both legal descriptions to both pieces, we really can't start the ordinance process. So that's just a heads up that perhaps as early as the meeting on January 2, we may have that information. But I'm thinking it's going to be more likely January 16 for a first reading on that property swap that Jerry Arnold has been advancing. A couple of other real estate matters also are pending, one involving the Deer Creek Ridge housing development, the dedication of a pump station site and a tower, rather, a water tower site that really should have been done about 10 years ago, and we kind of forgot about it. So we're catching up on something that got away from us. I have not heard anything directly from Bill Elenfeld, the federal prosecutor, on the request for monies given our police department's intervention and involvement with the Hot Stuff, Cool Things establishment that closed down back in 2012, or I should say, was closed down by the government. Matt Gregory, however, did receive a letter from an assistant federal prosecutor asking to clarify what our police department's involvement was, and we're putting that data together. I'm going to call Bill Elenfeld, who I know a little bit, and try to arrange a meeting. I think Michael and Matt and I are ready to just get in the car and head up to see the Festival of Lights in Ogilvy, maybe, and while we're up there, stop in and talk to the federal prosecutor. We're trying to make that arrangement here pretty soon. I'd like to talk with you a little bit about this new ordinance that we've hoaxed up. You might remember that memo a couple of council meetings ago that I read to you identifying about a half a dozen ordinances that would be coming at you. And so two of them are on the table in one stage or another tonight, ordinance 378 on first reading. This is ordinance 379, which I ask you to start looking at with me. There's, the thing is more than half-baked, but as you can see, it's not fully baked. I've got definitions reserved. We have to come up with some good language for the actual inspection and testing procedure. But if you bear with me for just a couple of minutes while I go through these whereas's, you'll get the flavor of what we're trying to accomplish. This would be ordinance 379 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance adopting the United States Environmental Protection Agency's guidelines for methamphetamine laboratory cleanup, revised edition, March 2013. Whereas the consumption and manufacturing of methamphetamine, also known as meth, poses considerable challenges throughout the United States, including West Virginia and the Buchanan Upstate community, and whereas meth is easily manufactured, highly addictive, and its use has serious impacts upon both human health and our environment, and whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency has declared that vigilance is warranted not only because of the destructive nature of meth itself, but also due to the significant environmental hazards that meth laboratories generate, and whereas the United States first demonstrated its commitment to better understand the hazards associated with meth labs in March 1990, when the Joint Federal Task Force published the guidelines for the cleanup of clandestine drug laboratories, commonly referred to as the Red Book, and whereas the task force was created pursuant to Section 2405 of the Anti-Drug Abuse Act of 1988, and included representatives from the Drug Enforcement Administration, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and the U.S. Coast Guard, and whereas the task force's charge was to issue guidelines to assist state and local officials conducting clandestine laboratory cleanups, and whereas the Red Book, updated in 2005, presents national guidelines for safely approaching and securing meth lab sites for first responders and other officials with immediate need to enter the site, and whereas the Red Book also addresses at length the gross removal of hazardous chemicals and chemical waste found in former meth labs, and whereas the Red Book focuses primarily on procedures related to first entry and gross removal of meth-related chemicals, the EPA's guidelines address remediation, that is, the cleanup of residual contamination after gross removal has occurred, which is necessary to allow unrestricted future use of the former meth lab property, and whereas in 2006, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy published the Synthetic Drug Control Strategy, a focus on methamphetamine and prescription drug abuse, known as the synthetic strategy, as a companion to the National Drug Control Strategy, wherein the federal government acknowledged that compared to first responder issues, a more complicated and less understood area of science is the optimal set and sequencing of response actions at former meth lab sites that may possess residual chemical contamination, and whereas the synthetic strategy tasked EPA with identifying best practices related to remediation of former meth labs, and whereas in December 2007, the Methamphetamine Remediation Research Act was passed, which directed the EPA to establish voluntary guidelines for the remediation of former meth labs based on the best currently available scientific knowledge, and whereas the EPA guidelines, in addition to new research, serve to meet both the synthetic strategies and the Methamphetamine Remediation Research Act's goals of improving our national understanding of identifying the point at which former methamphetamine laboratories become clean enough to inhabit again, and, and then the next six paragraphs recite some of those that you've heard me talk about endlessly in a number of other ordinances that we've adopted over the years that basically address the public welfare and all that good stuff. The last whereas paragraph on page two is worthy of reading. Whereas it is the intention of the council of the city of Buchanan to control, deter, and minimize the exposure of city residents to the health perils posed from reoccupancy of premises that had previously served as a meth laboratory that have not been subjected to thorough inspection, testing, cleanup, and remediation, and whereas the EPA prepared its guidelines for the specific purposes of providing cleanup guidance to homeowners, cleanup contractors, industrial hygienists, policymakers, and others involved in meth lab remediation, and finally, whereas the council of the city of Buchanan believes that the best manner in protecting the city's residents is to fully adopt and mandate compliance with the EPA methamphetamine laboratory cleanup guidelines, now therefore being ordained and enacted by the council as follows. And then what we'll follow will be the findings of council, definitions, procedures for inspections and testing, procedures for cleanup, and then our standard severability article, and then the effective date. If we have this ready to go at the January 2 meeting, we would offer that on a first reading for you, and then a second reading on January 16. Of course, 30 days thereafter would be, I've got February 1 in there, but it would actually be February 15 of 2014. So that's where we stand. We're starting to get busy on some of those ordinances that I promised. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question just in general about ordinances. Do we have any way of doing away with the rules like the legislature does and going ahead and passing an ordinance before the first, second, third, like, if this was very important, which I think it is? Can we suspend everything ahead? Pass it at one time?
No. State statute requires that every ordinance, unless it meets the emergency criteria set forth in the state code, that it must be read at at least two council meetings, not less than that. And our city charter, and again, you've got to take a lot of the city charter with a grain of salt because probably 40% of it has been repealed or amended by the state legislature, but there still is that roughly 60% that hasn't been amended that we're supposed to follow. But in this instance, relative to ordinances, it's completely repetitive of the statute. It has to be, every ordinance has to be read at at least two readings, and we cannot effect an ordinance, again, unless it's an emergency, for 30 days after its second passage. So that people that believe they are aggrieved by the ordinance's effectuation would have time to go to court and abate, try to prevent, and join us from actually enacting the ordinance.
We cannot consider this the first reading tonight?
No, sir. It's not on the agenda tonight. It's only a draft, and it's about three-quarters baked anyway. So I've just got some other things I need to go with.
Trying to get it going.
This is what I was reading. I found out about three typos. Two DO's should be D U E, and a couple others. Actually, I actually copied that out of the federal administrative rule and regulation. So yes, they had a type of the rule.
This sort of dovetails with your drug house ordinance too, doesn't it?
Yes. The drug house ordinance is actually a bit different, but it does, both of them will impact landlords, no question about it. The drug house ordinance is more about if we have identified a nuisance property where drug activity, particularly sales, are being undertaken, and we receive certification from either our police department or another police agency that an arrest or arrests have been made by occupants in that place, we contact the landlord, and they are notified that they must start eviction proceedings within 30 days after receiving the notice from the city. That is relatively novel in West Virginia. It is not novel throughout the United States. I think some of that data I provided you with a while back. Drug house ordinances have been around for more than 20 years in many states, but not so much in West Virginia.
You can't evict immediately, even if they were making that?
That's what I was wondering too.
I would think that would even take a deal.
I'd say you could probably condemn the property or deem it unfit for habitation.
A lot of times landlords will put in leases that they have the opportunity, if there is illegality going on within the place, that's subject to immediate eviction. But in absence of that, the landlord tenant law is pretty clear that, especially a month-to-month tenant, you've got to give a full period's worth of notice before you can evict a tenant.
We're going to work with the landlords, right?
That is the way we would like to present all of these ordinances that impact largely upon rental units, that we're really partnering with you landlords. You should screen your tenants more closely. We would like to have the police come in and maybe they can, you know, do a test where these landlords can smell what meth really smells like when it's cooking or being smoked, so that as they do their external inspections and some internal inspections of their rental units, and the other things to look for, the two-liter bottles that are used in these mobile lab operations and the different chemicals that go in it. If you see these things in the garbage, landlords, this is all in their best interest to be watching for these things so that they're not faced with enormous cleanup bills when they go to comply with the ordinance that we just discussed in a draft format.
So just to be clear, because the question has been raised to me, is this contemplated ordinance going to require that anybody with a drug charge or conviction be evicted, or only when we're talking about here, you know, from this point forward, and we're talking about possession with intent to distribute or distribution, or we're talking about the home as a drug house, not an individual who may get busted for, you know, possession or something, simple possession, being kicked out of their home?
Mr. Neal, we need to, as a city government, determine how far you want to go. There are places that are very, very conservative. A simple possession of marijuana could be enough to trigger the notice that would go to the landlord for eviction. And remember, this can't be, government can't be arbitrary, it cannot be capricious. If we set that as the threshold, and the police agencies, whether it's our own police department or the local state police detachment or the sheriff's office or a federal police agency notifies us that somebody at such an address on Main Street was arrested, they had a marijuana joint in their car, or something of that sort, if that's the threshold we set, that notice could be sent. So I think that's something we need to think long and hard about.
I would question whether or not an ordinance like that would be upheld in court. But I see your point. Whatever standard is going to be set has to be enforced.
The whole drug house ordinance, from a federal legal perspective, has been tested very, very voluminously, and universally, the courts have upheld those ordinances.
You've been down to the level of simple possession?
I'm not sure about that. Not sure about that.
And we're only talking about perspective.
There are other municipalities that, for a considerable period of time, have had that very low threshold. So I'm assuming that it's okay, but I've not read every single case that's ever come up involving the testing of the drug house ordinances.
Well, this deals with rental properties. What takes care of homeowner properties that where they're running a drug house out of their own residence?
A private residence? We still have within our We still have, within our zoning ordinance, the opportunity to bring nuisance actions, respecting any establishment or residence that would constitute a public nuisance. We have that as a matter of law anyway. It becomes more difficult when you have a landlord-tenant situation, because you've got contract law between that landlord and that tenant, which these drug house ordinances trump that contractual relationship as between the landlord and tenant. Oftentimes landlords would love to get rid of a problematic tenant. They suspect that there's something going on, and they've got a one-year lease with somebody, and they don't quite have enough on their own to get rid of this person, but that's getting back to this partnership. If a landlord suspects something, they should contact our police department or one of the other local agencies, and it gets investigated, and if there is merit to the suspicion, then this drug house ordinance actually allows us to help the landlord get rid of that problematic tenant. Now, it doesn't always play out that way. Sometimes there are landlords that they don't care what goes on in their place, they just want to make sure it's getting right.
What if you notify the landlord that there is something going on, and they don't care? What about that?
Typically, Matt Gregory may want to speak to this before me, but it normally would not be the case that if there is suspicion relative to a tenant, the police would normally not approach the landlord and say, hey, we think your tenant's, you know, doing drugs. I can't imagine that scenario actually occurring. Doesn't make any sense to me that way.
No, not the tenant, but a private citizen.
But this is a prospective.
Anybody can, anybody that suspects, I think we all should have the antennae raised, looking, trying to be educated about these different kinds of drugs and what to look for, particularly relative to meth and those kinds of things. We've heard so much about these mobile meth labs, which feature a two-liter bottle and the whole bit. You know, I never knew that until I started hearing it on the news. Maybe we can heighten the awareness of everybody in the community.
I'd love to have someone present at the city council sometime about it.
Sure, sure.
To know what, what does it smell like when it's cooking?
I don't know.
Well, I'm pretty much, what does marijuana smell like when you smoke it? I don't know that either.
I spent seven years in Oregon in the 1970s. I think I've got that one.
You know that one, huh?
I know what that stuff smells like, but the rest of it, I'd be clueless.
You know, there are some of us from the 60s that actually didn't do any of that stuff, so.
Matt, I mean.
That's Dave.
Dave. If there's somebody who rents property out and this would happen to them, is there insurance that covers that property? Will that take care of that cleanup? Do you understand?
Typically not.
There are grant opportunities through the Environmental Protection Agency for the first responder kind of cleanup, up to $25,000 a pop, but the guidelines relative to this second remediation, which allows for reoccupancy, they say right in the guidelines that generally speaking, we don't give monies out for those kind of purposes. So it's the cost, the cost, again, would be on the landlord to have to, and it's not cheap. These certified contractors that you have to go through, it's not just a matter of hiring a cleaning lady to go in, or a cleaning man, I should be politically correct.
Cleaning person.
A cleaning person, right. Anyway, whoever goes in to clean, it's not just hiring, you know, the maids-to-order kind of, you know, these have to be certified folks that really know what they're doing, that are trained.
Also typically requires your removal of all the drywall, all the carpeting, you know.
Is there such a situation where it'd be so bad that it has to be absolutely torn down?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
How would that be, who would determine that?
The testing that is done by the certified testers before the certified abaters, often these outfits are both certified and both, but the certified testers, when they send it off to the lab, they analyze, they take samples of the drywall and obscure places, and that this meth, depending upon how long it has been a lab site, it could be, it could permeate the whole sheetrock all the way through, which means that, yeah, that building, that house may have to be condemned.
But this all goes back then to wanting to try to help the landlord to then arrive?
Well, insurance coverage is not going to cover it, but the landlord will have to go after the tenant, and that's not going to do that.
Squeezing blood out of it.
Then it's almost like, you know, the way you hear how bad things are here, who would want to be a landlord?
The other thing I would point out, and I've got copies for everybody, I forgot to bring them out, Teresa ran copies of the 44 pages of the EPA guidelines. They talk at length about, particularly with younger children, and especially their respiratory and neurological systems during the developmental years, especially up to 12, that that's who this problem hits the most, that as a society, these little three, four, five-year-old kids that are in this environment, society for the rest of their lives will be paying the cost for a lack of methamphetamine remediation. Not on the cleanup.
This would include trailer courts and parks, Dave?
It would absolutely include any structure. Could be, could be a commercial structure, in fact, but very, very clearly residential, including mobile homes.
Also impacts unborn children.
Absolutely.
Having a youth children hospital is a tremendous problem with this.
Wasn't there a senior center that one of the grandchildren went and cooked meth somewhere in state or?
Stories are endless. The EPA has determined that this problem transcends that of mold, lead, and radon. And we've heard so much over the years about all of those things that the EPA has come to regulate, the dangers of the residual meth, and they're looking at guidelines for just users, people who smoke the stuff in a particular place, not, so there could be new regs coming out relative to that, not just the manufacturer of it, but the actual use of it too, so.
Not to mention hotel, hotel rooms.
Send them all to Antarctica, that's why.
It's, the more advanced we get, the more educated we become about the dangers of these things.
All wings of hotels have been shut down, you can tell somebody cooks some meth in there.
Exactly.
Okay, we'll be looking at that more later.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
That's all I have, but she has something to say.
Another story.
We, we'll get to that. We got, brings us to our consent agenda, which is a brutal minutes of regular meeting, December 5, building and mortgage permits, payment bills, request by Robin Shannon for collecting specimens on city property, and approval of solicitor permit by the SDA Church, Seven Day Adventist Church, December 25th for Christmas caroling. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I have it, right back to you, Dave.
Mayor, this would be the second, actually the first formal reading of ordinance 378. I've been over this with you the last couple of meetings. I'm just going to read it by caption, if you've got questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Ordinance number 378 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance amending ordinance number 377 of the city of Buchanan by, one, establishing a minimum fee of $100 for all commercial inspections, two, providing clarification that all rental properties shall be deemed to be commercial properties for purposes of administering the city of Buchanan's electrical inspection and fire protection ordinance, and three, exempting certain electrical work as performed by licensed electricians upon or within commercial premises from inspections, but provided that the work does not involve wiring within the inner recesses of walls, ceilings, and/or floors. The only change that has been made to the ordinance since we went through it with the draft ordinance last meeting on December 5, Mr. Clemmons, in looking at it again, believed that, given the spirit of ordinance 377, which was to better compensate and to be able to retain an electrical inspector, such as the excellent one we have with Mr. Martini, that this is about putting fees in a level that justifies the quantity of time for him to come out. And so the minimum fee that I had proposed of $50 was increased to $100 for these commercial inspections, so. It's before you on first reading, if you approve it tonight, there would be a second reading on January 2, preceded by a legal ad in the paper, and you'd have to have a public hearing since it involves inspections and permitting and those things that the code requires a public meeting for.
What if you have a multi-unit rental, David? Versus just simply one?
That would be, that would be one person, one structure, and if the, again, if the bill, if they were doing, say, $20,000 worth of electrical work, remember, you have the multiplier of 001 that kicks in, so the $20,000 electrical improvement would result in a $200 today. If it's $1 million worth of electrical in a $10 million facility, then it's going to be $10,000 just for the electrical inspection.
Doesn't really matter how the building's constructed or divided, it's really based upon the dollar amount of work that's done with a minimum.
That's right. All right, that's correct.
Motion to approve ordinance number 378 on first reading.
So move.
Motion made, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made in the second. Any question? Further discussion, all in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I have it, brings in comments and announcements, Ron?
Yeah, a couple of things. Going back to the issue of the electrical inspector, and my question a couple months ago, who inspects our electrical inspector's work since he is a licensed contractor? I'd still like to get that settled and see if we have somebody from another city or municipality that will inspect ours and a term for ours inspecting theirs. And I'm going on this right now because in the past week, in the past two weeks, in the process of selling my mother's home, we came into the, to a little problem with an inspector who also did the work and certified, his son did the work, he certified it, didn't even bother to come out and inspect it. He just certified it, and a lot of it was erroneous. I can see this perhaps happening in any inspector's job, and for that reason, I think it's very important that we have something decided that our electrical inspector, when he's acting as a contractor, does not inspect his own work. My thoughts on the matter. And it is an important matter. And my other thing is have a Merry Christmas and a safe New Year's, and God bless the USA.
Tom?
You stole my thunder. I just wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas and have a happy and healthy 2014.
Same.
Same.
Did it open?
Everybody remember the reason for the season.
Amen.
David?
Well, I always got to say something. First of all.
No, you don't.
I have too much time on my hands. The, I agree with what Ron said also about the person expecting their own work, that this doesn't make any sense. We need to, we need to deal with that and do something about it. But the, I don't know of how many people watch, I have Sirius XM radio, and I listen to MSNBC and CNN and Fox and everything, and when they had the budget resolution that was passed by the Congress, one of the things that appears to be very disturbing to me anyway, and I need to find out more about it, and I would ask all of us to give this serious consideration, is they want to bend the cost curve as far as the country's concerned, but I think sometimes when they're looking at changing entitlements, we have to be very careful. And there was information out there that appears that the military pension plans, what people who originally thought they were going to receive, have been cut back. And I think that's a real dilemma, if that is indeed the case, that if you go out and you expect you're going to receive certain things based on your service to this country, and then all of a sudden Congress decides, well, we're going to start cutting that back because we just can't really afford that anymore, you know, what's going to happen to our service personnel in the military in the future? How many people are, we've got a volunteer army today, we don't have the draft. And if that is indeed the case, I ask people to take a look at it, and if it is the case, we need to tell our elected officials to get a grip on reality and use some common sense. I say Merry Christmas to everybody, and Happy New Year, and have a safe and enjoyable holiday.
Okay, and I just want to also wish everyone a very happy holiday, Merry Christmas. I more than agree with Pam, we should remember why we celebrate Christmas. With that said, anybody out there got anything they want to say, then we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.